Thirty, time to call a meeting to order for Monday, August the 13th. Carl, Councilmember Remley.
Here.
Ronane.
Here.
Lunsman.
Here.
Slate Hansen.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Bunzness. Olson.
Here.
Rux.
Here.
Mayor Leeson.
Here.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, one change in the agenda. Item C under New Business, an application for a liquor license has been withdrawn for this evening, so cross Item C off of your list there. So we entertain a motion to approve the minutes of last Monday.
Second.
Motion Bunzness, second by Remley. Carl, we've got somebody on the phone, so we need a roll call, please. Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronane.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Slate Hansen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Bunzness.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Leeson. Aye. Motion carries. Consent counter has Eugene City Business Items A through E.
Moved.
Motion, Ronane, second by Remley. Questions on any of those? All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion carries. I skipped over open forum. Mike is here from the Development Corp., and I told him that if he had comments, he could make them when we got the new business. And that's where we are. Ordinance 180801, expanding number of projects eligible for sales tax refund. Lynn, you want this? Introduction?
Actually, Ron was the one that drafted the ordinance. So I didn't know if he did explanation.
You can't see that bus coming? Then I'll try to jump out of the way.
Pass the buck.
Initially, what I'd like to do is ask the council that if there's a motion to approve the ordinance that does not involve a revision of any of the language in blue, I would ask that the motion move just past 50-93 and 50-96, as we're showing the changes on here. The reason for putting the language in blue is to just give the council some context. It's a little easier to understand. But all the language in blue, none of that has been changed, so it doesn't need to be in this particular ordinance if there is a motion to approve first reading.
I'm sorry, would you do that again? What are you saying?
The language in blue, none of it has been changed. That's the existing ordinance. So it doesn't really need to be in here, and we can remove that for purposes of first reading if there's no changes to any of the language in blue.
I see.
Yeah.
I got what you're saying.
I just thought it'd be a little easier for the reader to understand the context of what's happening with 50-93 and 50-96. And I'll be honest with you, I would like to do this in the future. I think it's a little easier for people to understand if they have a little more of the sections around these revised sections.
How's this different from before, when we just did what you were changing and read, and everything else stayed the same?
Well, because what we have is, we have an entire division that's being impacted by the changes to these two.
Okay.
But you might not note that unless you see the rest of the language.
Okay.
Okay.
Just curious.
So now on to the substantive portion of this.
So red lines go on.
Yeah. If there's any changes at second reading, then you will see red lines.
Okay.
Yeah. So for first reading, however, we've been tasked with revising the section on the sales tax refund to reflect requested changes by Mike Bocconi a few weeks ago to make the sales tax refund available to more projects and to make that the potential refund of 100%. The administration, after looking through that and going through an analysis of what's out there, and I will also note that we were directed specifically to a program that Brookings uses, that's essentially a grant program for its sales tax refunds. They don't call it the refund, they call it a grant. But they're using sales tax dollars and allowing for a refund of a portion of those sales tax dollars. And Brookings, in that grant process, established some evaluation criteria that don't rely on a dollar amount that we have in our current ordinance, which was modeled after the Sioux Falls ordinance. And that frankly deals with larger projects. The $10 million for non-realty capital acquisitions, $5 million if there's actually a property value increase, and that, of course, generates sales tax dollars, or I'm sorry, property tax dollars for the city. And so those were the large projects. So now we got into looking at what a city like Brookings would do, and that was the language that Mr. Bocconi was asking that we incorporate in here. And what we've done at 50-93 is we've established the two types of projects. One is the original projects with the large, which we'll call the large projects. And then we've established a second at 1B for smaller projects. And those would be projects that include at least 20% of the dollar amounts above. So we'd still be, we'd be looking at $1.25 million in taxable value, or $2 million in non-realty capital assets, or a combination of $2 million. However, they would, this body would then need to make an initial preliminary assessment of whether this project will identify, will, will develop net benefit to the community. And we've got Roman numeral. So this language at 1B under 50-93 allows for approval of a smaller project that still meets a threshold of 20%. And the reason for that is because it becomes administratively to deal with all of these without some kind of a threshold. It's difficult to quantify. It with these, with a project that would earn $2 million, for example, it'd be very Having made that initial preliminary finding by this council, then the application would move forward and go through the process for review by the finance officer at 50-96. And what we've added is the Sub B there, which requires the finance officer to do essentially a scoring analysis of that. And I understand that there is the ability to create those kinds of return on investment analysis that would allow the finance officer to look at whether that essentially provides a quality of life, growth in the local economy, and a net economic benefit to the city, and then can make to the council the finance officer's recommendation for approval or denial. And then it's going to come back to the council again. And at that point, the council can take the recommendation of the finance office and decide whether to approve or deny the application. And then at that point, if there is an approval of the application, then it goes through the remaining sections, which allows for a 50% refund maximum of sales and use taxes paid to the city on the project.
Okay, I just want to question, you should compare this to Brookings. Is 50% their maximum also?
Brookings has, appears to me that they have a grant up to 100%.
Okay, just curious. Mike, you're the one that brought this request. I think before we entertain a motion, would be appropriate for you to just come tell us what you think.
The first thing I'd like to say is that I'd just like to thank the council for being open to this conversation regarding this ordinance. I'd also like to thank Lynn, Ron, and Carl for working on this. We probably, as you're going to figure out here in a second, may not be on complete agreement on this, but we certainly appreciate working with the city and feel we have a very good working relationship. Our preference, as I stated before, would be for this request to be, as I stated previous, possibly up to 100% on a case-by-case basis, with no limited dollar amount if the project follows at least one of the parameters listed in here, 1 through 7, as Ron just spoke of. As I mentioned a few weeks back, this amendment would further expand the tools we have to entice business recruitment, retention, and/or expansion here in Aberdeen. What we have simply come across is that many of the states which surround South Dakota either do not charge sales tax on certain items, specifically equipment, or they have the ability to waive this charge up to 100% if they choose to. Not every situation is obviously the same. Furthermore, as we've now talked about, Brookings, one of the communities which we often find ourselves in direct competition with, has adopted a policy which allows them to waive up to 100% on a case-by-case basis. We feel that by having hard numbers in the sort of ordinance, there is a possibility where we could end up discounting potential grade expansion, recruitment, or retention, because every instance is different. For instance, you know, what if a company were to add 50 jobs to our economy at an average of $25 an hour, but only needs maybe, let's say, $500,000 worth of equipment? You know, a one-time rebate, if I do my math right, would be about $10,000, but that would equate to an annual payroll of 2.6 million. And I've heard the mayor state previously on some numbers. Mike, I'm going to forget the number, but the average return is what, what's that number?
If you.
Do the math.
There are approximately 27,000 people employed in Brown County. And if you compare that to our total revenue of sales tax, second penny tax, and property tax, that's about 27 million, right in that area. So every, using that comparison, if you figure somebody's going to come in and get a job, the city nets about $1,000.
Okay.
If you go by households, it's about 1,400, if everybody that got a job brought a family. But if it's just by number of employees, that's kind of a handy number to figure.
Sure. You know, if we choose to adopt, or if you guys choose to adopt the policies presented, we feel that we're already setting ourselves at somewhat of a disadvantage in comparison with one of our other larger competitors here. And we certainly would have an advantage of being at minimum on a level playing field, and that would be good for potential growth here in Aberdeen. I would also like to mention, we do have one particular instance which would qualify for this particular option. And if we were able to maneuver through this and make the ordinance, they would be looking at doing a nice expansion here in our community. So that would be our take on the ordinance as presented by Ron and Lynn and Carl.
Okay, so to open up the discussion, we would need a motion on possible first reading of this ordinance.
Move, approve.
Who is over here? Motion Remley, and second by Bunzness. Questions or comments, or questions of Mike, or? Questions. Anyone?
I move to amend the motion to include an amendment to Section 50-97, changing the first sentence to read that the refund shall be determined by City Council Resolution up to 100% of the sales and use taxes paid to the city with respect to the project.
Is there a second?
Clear.
We have a motion by Remley, or by Ronane, second by Remley, which would effectively allow up to 100% refund, so. Questions, or, Rob, you tell us why.
Thank you. You know, I guess, consistent with Mr. Bocconi's comments, I'd like to give the council discretion and authority to match what our competitors are doing, and this amendment would do that.
I'm going to vote against the amendment. I would like to see the particular investment, similar to what Brookings does, this investment process that they go through, to determine whether there's a return before I make any commitment to go in 100% with the manufacturer that's already requested that we do this. So I would like that to be done before we even make a determination whether 100% is appropriate or not.
Well, I'm going to vote for this. I am typically in favor of finding good people to put confidence in and then letting them do their job. And I have confidence in our Development Corp. and in Mike to be judicious in the way that they approach this. And I don't know how many others of you have been involved in the dark world of competition between and among cities for economic development. It's a dog-eat-dog world where every deal you make, the next day, you know, you got to make another one. It's very competitive. And we all want the same thing. We all want more businesses to come here. We all want to do it in a responsible way that doesn't unfairly give benefits to people that don't deserve them. I think having the opportunity for the council to choose between 50% and 100% would make Mike's job easier. And yet we would still, as the council, retain the ability to push him back if we didn't like what he did. So, you know, we all want the same thing. We're elected to make decisions. Let's leave this open-ended and make the decisions one at a time, based on what's in front of us. That's my outlook on it.
Then I would suggest that he just comes back to the council every time this happens, and we make a determination at that time if we want to amend the ordinance that is before us, that will, that should remain at 50%. I mean, if this, you know, a year ago, we went with large projects, and that seemed to be the thing that was going to solve the issue. Now we're back, and to some degree, I'm not comfortable with giving 100% away because of what we just, you know, did we listen to the budget presentation of what AGP, what that sales tax brought us and what it cost? Now, is it a cost, maybe, you know, we can argue that point, I'm not willing to do that. But if we went 100% with AGP, which would almost make more sense than someone that's not going to do any realty improvements, would almost make more sense, because we're probably going to get more return there, that would have put us in the hole with sales tax. So these are decisions that affect every citizen in this community, and the items that we can do, you know, we talk about parks and rec, quality of life things, you know. I want to first see if this is going to be a major, major thing, where we're going to be coming back to this council monthly, semi-annually, because people want to buy new capital equipment.
I agree, Dave, you know, we could, we can always change whatever we do. If that 50% is there, we could change it if Mike wants to bring us something. Meanwhile, he's got to tell the people that he's dealing with, there's an ordinance against what I'm doing here, and it's going to take a process of probably at least a month to change that. What I'm saying is, the result would be the same, whether we change it or don't change it when they bring it, or whether we leave it at 0% or 50% here. The result for us as a council is exactly the same in that we have the decision whether it's 50% or 100%. Where the difference lies is when Mike is sitting in front of those people, talking to them about what the options may be and what the process is. And I just think if it's easier for Mike, it's better. We don't like what he does. Every single time it comes up, we can say no.
Well, but that's what happened now. That's what happened in this particular case. There's been a commitment given, and now we're trying to write an ordinance to get that commitment taken care of. So I'm not comfortable with that process.
Can I make a couple?
Sure.
Comments? First off, to your point you just made, Dave, we made a decision as a development corporation because of what you just stated, that we, as the development corporation, are going to take care of the commitment because of that issue. So you will not see that one come before you. This is going to be for everything after. So.
But we're still writing an ordinance for, because of that. So, I mean, really, in essence, we would do, I mean, you could still do the same thing that we just went through here. You could come back and say, hey, I've got something. And part of it is just transparency to our citizens, that here, we're thinking that this is a good idea. We've gone through the return on investment, and we see this as a viable project. So I still think we could do the 50% and have you come report to us if there's any new projects that are coming forward.
Well, if I read the way that Ron has drafted this, and Ron, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that would have to be the case. We have to come and request this every single time. We can't just do it, right?
Right.
So I think what you're.
Are we talking about with the amendment or just as drafted here?
As, even, either way. I, we still can't tell somebody you're going to get 100%. We're going to have to say that we're going to have to go through the process and come before the council.
Yeah, I agree.
We can't make that statement.
There's applications to be done.
Jennifer, you haven't had a chance to speak.
Well, I was not here when this was originally presented, and I'm going to speak in regards to the entire ordinance, not just this, not just this proposed change. I'm going to vote against it. And the reason I'm going to vote against, I'm going to vote against the entire thing. We're hearing from Mike, and I appreciate that he is presenting one side of a very multi-sided story, and I appreciate everything that staff did in working on this. But I don't think we're hearing from all sides in this thing. I don't see any small business, or medium-sized business, or large business owners sitting in the audience tonight telling us, yes, you need to do this because this is going to help my business, which is already here in our community and is growing. I can name a handful of people, right off the top of my head, who are business owners in this community, who this, who are growing business owners in this community, who this isn't going to do a darn thing for. I think that there are lots of ways that we can help grow business in our community without giving, you know, some business who promises to bring two jobs, or four jobs, or 10 jobs, you know, how do we know they're going to stay? When we have somebody who's here and growing those businesses, they're more likely to stay, especially if they're a small business owner who lives here. You know, these big businesses who promise they're going to bring these jobs in, I mean, what guarantee do we have that they're going to stay more than two, three, six months? I just, I don't like this. I, I mean, I'm, my proposal would be table it for six months. We, how, you said a year, Dave? I don't think it's been a year since we passed the original ordinance for the processing plant. How long's it been?
Year 2016.
Yeah, it's been over a year.
Okay, it has been over a year. It does fly, I guess, especially when.
It gets worse the older we all get.
Anyway, I don't, I'm not, I'm not satisfied with where this is, and I am going to be voting against it tonight.
Who else?
I also respect the work that was done by staff, and I'm most comfortable with the way it was originally written rather than with the amendment.
Who else?
Like I say, I don't think I'd ever vote to give away 100% of the sales tax anyway, because that sales tax is relied upon to provide our fire protection, police protection, roads. We have water issues that we need to solve, and a lot of this goes a long way to do, and at 50%, I think, would be something that I probably wouldn't exceed. So for me, asking for an amendment to change it up to 100%, to me, doesn't make a difference, because I could never consternably say to our taxpayers that we're going to give all of the increase away, and you're on the hook for providing this fire protection, police protection, without any return on investment, because they could take a property tax through the five-year method of a reduced property tax. So we're not receiving full property tax on some of these projects until year five or six.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here as counsel for Development Corporation. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I look at this, I've worked through this ordinance with Mike and talked to him about it, and really, a way to look at this is a personal property TIF. You invest all the time in future projects in the form of real estate TIFs to give an opportunity for the tax to go to a benefit to allow development to occur that normally wouldn't. This is akin to that. I'm not going to say it's a direct analogy, but when you are enticing a business to come to Aberdeen, and you are able to offer them an incentive in the form of a tax abatement, that essentially is an investment in the business that's coming with the prospect of providing jobs to generate the sales tax on a recurring and annual basis and to infuse money into the economy. So it is a one-time expenditure upfront for a long-term gain in the end. So I do think it is different. The other thing is, as I think has been kind of pointed out, it is a process that requires City Council approval each and every time. The benefit to Mike is when he is at a negotiation or a competitive situation, as the mayor has pointed out, is to be able to say that the city does allow up to 100% rebate, provided the City Council approves it. It's different than saying, all we can do is 50%, but I can go ask for a special exemption. The other thing that's a bit akin to is a variance hearing. You, as a body, sit and listen to circumstances, case by case, as each of these may came up, may come up. And there may be a standard set of rules, which is going to remain on the books. But if you give yourself the right, in the right situation, to create a variance from the normal set of rules and grant up to 100%, that's what you're all empowered to do and really good at. You're able to analyze the facts in front of you and decide whether this special case warrants a variance from what would be the normal and ordinary case of collecting the full sales tax, as opposed to rebating any of it. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I'm reminded of a saying, there's no point in asking about the quality of the air if it's time to take a breath. You know, we can talk about what's fair, what's not fair, what's, you know, different implications of this, but we have to understand the atmosphere we're living in. We're living in an atmosphere where every city in the country wants every business that we're after. And the reason I'm going to vote for this is, the air that we're living in, when we're ready to take a breath and send Mike out, I want him to have every possible tool there, and yet retain the ability of this council to say no. And if we adopt this amendment, we could do that. So, anybody else? Comments before we vote on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Olson.
I would be in favor of the amendment. As long as the council has final decision, I agree that this provides a tool for promoting Aberdeen. As long as the council has the final say, I would approve the amendment.
Mark?
I agree with Mike and Mike. We hand out TIFs to just about anybody who comes and asks for one. And it's an economic growth tool, and I think this would help Mike and his recruiting. And I really do believe that it's just an added benefit that he can share with the possible future businesses that might open up here. So I would, I would vote for this.
You know, for me, though, this is different than a TIF, because we're not losing any potential revenue from a TIF. Our revenue stays the same. We may supply services for that area, but at the same point, we're still gaining property tax based on the current valuation.
But if the business doesn't come, the revenue stays the same.
And I don't, I think in the same case with MFG, we didn't deny the TIF for MFG. We gladly gave the MFG and the Development Corp. a TIF for that building. AGP didn't want one. If AGP would have wanted a TIF, we would have gladly have given it to them, because there's a real economic benefit, because now, instead of giving the sales tax rebate and not getting the property tax, you know, it's like, okay, I'm putting off the property tax, but I'm getting the added sales tax from it. Like I say, we have a mechanism, which they get 50% back, and we've only had one project. And like I say, I, we've had.
And like I say, I, we've had no problem if someone wants a TIF to put up a new building, I'd support those every day of the week. But if someone wants to buy a bunch of equipment, that might be a little bit different.
Lynn, do you have something?
Yeah, I just kind of asked a question for a point of clarification. When you offered your amendment, what section were you amending?
Fifty ninety-six, ninety-seven.
Okay.
To change the fifty to a hundred.
Okay.
Well, can I? So then, in effect, by doing that, it doesn't matter whether it's subsection A or B, it would all be the same because otherwise, if you had a smaller project and A remained at 50%, you would, if you had a larger project, you would try to break it into a smaller project where you get 100% refund versus a 50% refund. So you're saying 100%, potential for 100% for project, nine, fifty ninety-three, one, A as well as B.
Your intent is for all of them, right? It was, actually. Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to add as a clarification.
Was there a hand up over here that I missed? Well, you know, I was just, you know, my, yes, I was just going to make one additional comment. And actually, Clint, I appreciated his comments. One of the additional flexibilities this would give us is sometimes we may not want to give 50, okay? The way it's written today, it is 50, okay? Maybe we want to give 30. Maybe, maybe Mike can do his magic with 20. You know, some, and some projects aren't going to justify, certainly aren't going to justify 100. You've made that clear and I think you're right. Most projects won't, but some projects may, may not justify 50. And I think it doesn't hurt to give this council the ability to look at each project individually.
And, and actually, that's one thing is, is with this ordinance, I do like, is that we do have a final say. We have to pass it by resolution. I like that part of the ordinance. To me, you know, the 50%, you know, it's, you know, when, yeah, not every project get 100%, but would we really, really ever want to give someone just 20%? I don't know. You're right, it can go the other way and I was aware of that fact, but most people are going to try and get the maximum they can get because they're business people, no different than anyone else. And then you put it up to us to determine what these businesses can get. The fairness in this is that anyone, and I'm not even opposed to the lower limits on some of these items, I'm not opposed to that, is guess what? I want it fair and a little impartiality out of it at the same point. So we're not picking and choosing which benefit, what we feel is a benefit and not because you might have that small business owner who maybe only gets 50%, but then another business owner might get 100% and it puts us at a disadvantage where it looks like we're picking and choosing which businesses. If there was a clause in there that said this was only for new businesses, that we could go up to 100%, I'm all for that also, but not everything. Because now you're sitting there saying that this business might be worth more of a refund than this business, even though they might have similar things. It takes a little impartiality out.
Dave, you've been waiting for a long time.
I just want to make sure that I understand the spirit of the way it's written right now in blue, is that we have a choice of either 0% or 50%? Is that the way that that reads right now?
Right now, if, if a project is approved, then it's 50%.
We have no latitude with the way the language is written.
Correct, currently, yep. Mike, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I just, Clint, I appreciate your, your comments, but I just, in, in the world that, that we live in, in economic development, it's, not everything is equal. It's just not. And we pick and choose every day. In fact, I would tell you that 95% of the projects that come before us are, don't last more than a day. We're just not interested, they just don't fit for a number of reasons. And that not only has to deal with, with new businesses looking to come into Aberdeen, but more so on businesses that come to us looking to expand, who are already here. The large majority of, of time, we can certainly step them through and help them, but again, probably 95% of the time at least, there's no, nothing we can do for them financially.
And I would like to help those small businesses that are here that can expand because they are here, they're vested in our community.
I, I do feel very strongly that if you change the ordinance as Rob has amended, then you're going to have the ability to do so. Because most, most of them, Clint, are not coming in looking for $2 million worth of equipment. Most of them are $100,000, $200,000, $300,000. You know, they're, when you have a smaller business that employs, you know, I can think of one right off the top of my head, they employ 11 people. Well, they, they're looking for a capital expenditure, well, they actually just did it in the last six months, they had to buy a piece of equipment that probably cost them, I think it was right north of about $130,000. Well, it, it didn't create any more, they still had 11 employees and they had some contracts. So my discussion with them was simply, there is no financial incentive in terms of any sort of rebate or grant that either we can get for you from the Development Corporation or from the city or from the county. There are a couple of programs that you can apply for from the state if you'd like to and most of those were just low-interest loans, you know, because most banking institutions are only going to loan five years on equipment. Well, there's some programs that exist through the GOED that have, you know, a 10-year, 10-year loan commitment. So they were able to secure one of those and that's how that sort of piece comes to fruition. But in the case, you know, if, if a company wants to expand and, you know, the hard part is, is I understand everybody's points, they're all very excellent points on both sides of the argument. I think our main point here, guys, is if you just had the ability to make the determination on every single entity and every single case that came forward. And I also want to be clear, I do not believe that this is going to open some sort of floodgate. We don't do this often. In fact, I can tell you, we have not done any sort of tax incentive or tax break since AGP. Haven't even talked about one until this particular instance came up. And this particular instance came up because this company that came and requested this also has a location in Brookings. Well, they received 100% in Brookings. They also received 100% of the state tax back in Brookings. So when they came here, even though it is a smaller expansion, it's, you know, it's around $5 million worth of equipment with approximately eight jobs. Of course, they wanted the same thing. We don't see this on a, on a daily, weekly, not even a monthly basis. It's not all that often.
Is the state giving them the rebate as well? If they come here, is, are they getting a rebate from the state as well?
The, the company, just to be clear, Mark, the company's already here.
Okay.
They're going to add about $5 million worth of equipment and, and hire approximately eight people.
Okay.
Yes, the state has already committed to give them the 100%.
The state already has, okay.
The state already has it, I have it in writing.
Okay.
Yes.
The thing is, is, and I'm going to use the example of your small $130,000 project, the ordinance, if it passes even with this amendment, that project wouldn't qualify for any rebate because of the 20% limit.
I know that and that's what I told them, is that there's, there, I don't expect that to. I think that's where you have to realize that not every project is going to be the same.
Oh, every, no project is the same and I do realize that, but my thing is, is if I'm, if I, if I'm going to keep 11 employees here, or maybe they even add or have future expansion plans and it's not $1 million, maybe it might be worth us to look at some of those limits. But at the same point, you know, do we grant 100% of that sales tax back or is 50% good enough? I guess you're right, I don't know. But all I know is that when you add jobs and people to this community, they expect services and they expect us to provide for it. And at least we get a little something from that 50% to where we can do that.
Question regarding amendments versus resolution. Are amendments a higher order or they're, they're much more difficult to get through than a resolution?
Amendment, an ordinance amendment? Yes, yes, requires us, another reason.
This, you know, we talk about that the city has to approve this, but it's by a simple resolution, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, if this is not, if this is not a monthly semi-annual, it's been two years since AGP comes in, come back and make an amendment to the existing ordinance to, to increase that percentage and vet it out, be transparent to the council. Instead of having it as a simple resolution where we, we do those all the time, it seems to be a low bar in my, in my mind.
With the, the change that's been proposed, does that change anything where the staff has a recommendation? I know what the, what original recommendation was, but of what you saw or what anybody saw here as staff, the amendment, does that change your view of what it does to your budget?
Hey, I, I'm looking at this in a little different way. I'm looking at it from the finances of the city and when you look at the four-year average of the sales tax gain as far as increase, it's been less than 1%. And I understand that these type rebates can also give us growth within sales tax as well as property taxes. But maybe I'm looking at it in a conservative manner, but it's not as though our sales tax growth has been appreciable, whereas when we start doing rebates, I question as to how those rebates will affect our operations currently. Now, I realize that there's been a Supreme Court decision and as a matter of fact, I gave you a copy of what happens after the Supreme Court ruling where our revenues may rebound to where they were previously, but I don't feel that we're in the same mode on the last five-year period. We've actually seen decreases in our sales tax to a certain extent from a growth perspective compared to the past and maybe it'll return to where we were in the past. And so I'm asking that you be cautious about what you do here until we have a better feel of where the revenues.
But won't, won't that be taken into consideration under the way the ordinance is currently written or, or the amendment, that we ask your advice of where we're at according to the budget and say, hey, you're going, we, we don't have this, we can't do this? And then it's our decision from there to either go forward or not?
Yes, it is.
And with this, as I understand, this gives us more leeway to go below 50% as well as above 50%?
I guess what I'm trying to say as a tool, I hope in the beginning that there is awareness to the fact that we're in a fragile situation to a certain degree and as we grow, you know, availability, this tool can grow too also, but I hope that in the beginning, we're in a cautious state until we see changes.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Can I clarify the, the amendment? Would be the first sentence of section 50-97, which everybody is looking at, but we would replace it with this sentence. The council by resolution may determine a refund up to 100% of the sales and use taxes paid to the city with respect to an approved project. Does that sound?
That's very close to what I said. It isn't, but that's. Okay, let's vote.
One last thing, sorry. What's it, why, why a resolution? Could we also do this in an ordinance where it requires two readings?
Yes.
You know, I just wanted, one last, one last point, kind of going, I think where Dave was going, is that this council has two responsibilities. One is, yeah, you get excited about potential for new jobs, but there's this other responsibility of fiduciary responsibility. And I think that will be the challenge for us. And I think it's, it, it will become really easy for us to approve these all the time. I don't, I, I don't see, you know, can't predict what future councils will do, but I don't see that we've been real, I don't want to say frugal, but that's the, that's a poor word, but I mean, we have some real challenges here that Lynn just laid out. Now, do we, if we don't have the jobs, we don't see the revenue. I understand that argument, we don't see the investment. But again, we don't even know if, what the investment, return on investment on this particular project, it would be a great example because I could see more of these types of projects coming than getting an AGP large project to come into Aberdeen. I would think that some of the, the businesses that we have here right now would take advantage of, of this amended ordinance. And the challenge to us is to remember what, what we're responsible for here. And that's providing services for our citizens.
Mark?
I would love to have the challenge to have more business come to Aberdeen and if this is going to help, let's do it.
I'd love to have the challenge to make the decision one at a time. Yep. Are we ready to vote?
Getting back to my thing is, is basically, we could do this by ordinance as well.
That would be a different amendment.
I know it would be, but that's something I need to-
Well, let's take care of this one then. So we are ready to vote. Carl, roll call for the amendment as defined by the city attorney.
Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Bunstness?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
No.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye.
Five ayes, four noes.
Okay, back to the primary motion for first reading of the ordinance as amended. Questions or comments?
I'll be bringing probably an amendment next week, but I want to work with the attorney to make sure it's right.
That's good.
Is there also regarding this with going to 100%, I think you mentioned before, Lynn, that businesses, the potential of splitting up a project?
Well, it doesn't matter now if everything's under 100%. I thought you had kind of a separation between large projects and small projects and I was concerned that you were giving 100% to small projects and leaving large projects at 50%.
Okay, okay, I got you.
And if the fact is 100% for all, it doesn't matter. Otherwise, I could see the larger projects trying to split up where they were going to get 100%. There'd be no incentive for it.
Understood, yeah. Other questions on the main motion? Carl, first reading on the main motion, ordinance 180801 as amended. Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Slate Hanson?
No.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mike. As I said, we all, five, four, four, five, whatever, we all want the same thing. We want you to be able to do your job and do it in a way we can deal with, so keep up the work.
Next item on our agenda is the public hearing regarding the 2019 capital improvement program and I believe for the 14th consecutive year, we have not a single person from the public here-
Cody's here.
-to, to comment on this $9 million worth of work and the second penny. So I would entertain a motion from the council to approve the capital improvement program provided to us by Lynn and his department heads.
So moved.
Take it.
Motion Johnson, second by Slate Hanson. Questions on it from the council? All in favor, oops, roll call, Carl?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye. Motion carries. Item C, as we said, has been withdrawn at the request of the people who made the application. Item D is an application for justice assistance grant from the US Department of Justice and I didn't look to see who's this come from.
Chief McNeil.
Chief?
All right, thank you. So originally, we applied to the justice assistance grant with the US Department of Justice. At the time, we filled this, or completed this grant, we were looking at two police vehicles for this grant. In the grant application, it didn't specify how much we would be eligible for. As time went by, we were notified that our allotment for this grant would be this $14,506. That wouldn't necessarily cover the cost of two police cruisers. We're still eligible for this funds and we can reallocate it towards different things from equipment to overtime, different utilization for this, but we do need to have this hearing and get your approval to utilize these grant funds.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion, Ronain, second by Rux. Any questions? Carl?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries.
Item E is a change order and subsequent pay estimate in the amount of $166,601 to Sharp Enterprises for a public works project. Robin?
We did have some minor variances on the amount of slump that was in the concrete for sake of, of your use. This is basically how wet the concrete is and creates an issue for how they place it. And it actually during warmer days is a little easier to finish because you've got a little more time. However, it does create a problem with edge slumping and things and, and it's harder to match the second, the carbon gutter or the second slab up to it. So there is a slight deduct there. The strengths are all good, so that's, that's the good news, is that we didn't compromise the strength of the slab. And so we do have a minor deduct, but we are recommending the pay estimate in the amount of $166,601.
Move approval.
Second. Motion Rux, second by Lunsman. Questions or Robin on this?
So what was the deduct for?
Slump.
I know, but how does that, it's, you're paying for the concrete, so how does the deduction come into it?
The deduction comes in based on, we want to have a slump in that two-inch range.
Yep.
And there were some slumps that were up closer to the four-inch range. So it does settle a little more and it's harder to hold grade.
So you're basically a penalty?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Carl, we have motion and a second to pay the bill. Roll call, please. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries.
Cody, your next three items from the airport. Start with number one.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item before you is very preliminary work, seeking your approval to do some exploration under our general aviation apron through this contract. What we're trying to do here is develop on, on the forefront some plans to submit to the FAA. There is this year, an additional billion dollars, or I should say, over the next three years in funding that Congress has authorized to airports, which sounds like quite a bit, but it's less than a third of what's normally allocated every year. So it's going to be a very competitive process. We're just trying to set ourselves up in that competition to hopefully get some of those billion dollars of additional funds for a GA apron project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion Johnson and second by Ronain. Questions on this one? The payment $17,640 to American Engineering Testing. Carl? Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries.
Number two, Cody.
Number two is a project that we've been working on and planning for, for approximately the last year and a half, $854,067 to JBT Technologies. We went out for bid for a new passenger boarding bridge and they were the low bidder. They have a very good reputation in the industry, and I think I discussed it briefly with the council before, but we're trying to set up the, the current terminal, excuse me, for the maximum amount of flexibility moving forward. And when I say that, we're working to maximize the range of aircraft that we could serve with this new jet bridge. And hopefully, as Aberdeen continues to grow in the future, if there's ever a need that arises for a second jet bridge, we're trying to make sure that we can utilize the current apron and build that second jet bridge on there.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion Johnson, second by Ronain. Mayor Remley. So you have to wait to the FAA to say you can do this yet, or?
This is, we will submit with your approval here, our, our grant offer, they have the money, just waiting for the paperwork.
We know what we want, we just don't know if they're going to give it. Roll call, please, Carl. Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries.
Motion Bunstness, second by Johnson to make the payments. Carl? Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Bunstness?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Slate Hanson?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Leeson?
Aye, motion carries.
Lynn?
I just wanted to bring to your attention, within the city manager's report for this particular meeting, there was an excellent article that I copied from the Retailers Association where it says, what's next after the Supreme Court ruling? And it provides some detail as to what the Department of Revenue furnished to the Retailers Association, such as what steps will the Department of Revenue take to implement the tax changes now that Supreme Court has ruled in South Dakota a favor? When does the tax go into effect on the out-of-state retailers? And likewise, the law applies to online retailers with 200 or more separate transactions in South Dakota or with $100,000 or more in gross sales in South Dakota. So it gives some details as to the expectations, as what we can expect to see within the next year.
Okay. I want to thank Mike for taking the time to call in, and I also want to thank the council once again tonight, as opposed to different from councils in other cities that I've seen. We can get through a five to four vote without any personal acrimony, and we're really good at this. We've had not that many times where we've had a split down the middle of the council, but we always seem to handle it in a, in a manner that's respectful of each other. And I, I appreciate that, it doesn't happen in every city. Anybody with an end before we go?
We'd probably have more people watch if we did do that, though.
We would. I think that Sioux Falls, those Sioux Falls meetings get a pretty good rating.
Move to adjourn.
Motion Slate Hanson, second by Remley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.